Motion with Vice Mayor Amick dissenting.
Sorry, I wanted to make sure I got it right there.
Alright, and then item four A is a discussion related to change orders fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen out at Venture Park in a total of one million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents.
Mayor, I asked if we could pull that just for a second, I wanted to make sure that I understood the low part of the bid on this. As I was looking through the bids and I was trying to make comparisons and I was looking through the staff memo yesterday and today and talking about RD Johnson being the low bidder on, you know, the project that originally came out on the base bid and, you know, I see all that, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars difference. But as we get into the bid alternatives, or bid alternates, I see that there's a difference in figures. Now, I know that we're not doing all of those things as the mayor pointed out to me a little while ago. But the only items that we're looking at on this change order are items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen?
That is correct.
Okay, and those items, those items then still remain the low bid with RD Johnson, is that correct?
Well, those, those items were not bid.
Okay.
What we're doing is we're taking his costs that he allocates for certain quantity works and we have negotiated with him these recommended change orders for this additional work.
So it's, as we discussed back in, in March, this is where we actually just traded the item for the work that was to be done elsewhere for the new project that's to be done, is that correct?
Well, what we did was we've established a special assessment benefit district with a maximum dollar amount and we are still underneath that, that maximum dollar amount to do all this work. We have, as you know, platted the property that includes the O'Connell Road extension. Because we have the contractor in the field now, because we got what we thought were very good bids at the time that we bid the project, because the contractor is successfully executing the work, we recommended in October that you direct us to negotiate the O'Connell Road Extension Change Order that you see here, and then we've got some other change orders on work that's already really occurred and gone through that was, that was necessary. So we've, we can recommend this based on our negotiation, based on the quantity amounts and the dollar amounts that he had that associated when we received all of those bids and he was the, the low bid and you all awarded the contract to him at that time.
Okay, so we're doing this under design, design bid or design build?
And, yeah, right, and David and Chuck can amplify on this, but we essentially have designed it in, in cooperation with the contractor to get the, the specifications in place and plans in place, using existing specifications from the rest of the road work to, to get the road work in place.
So we're still down, we're still at that dollar amount that we originally were underneath that maximum cap?
We are still under the resolution amount, that is correct.
And Mike had noticed that bid alternates B and C, is that what they're titled?
Uh, one and two.
One and two?
Right.
Uh, were actually, the other contractors were, were substantially lower than the successful bidder on the, on the main bid, and can you just address that? Because I think it's an interesting...
The amount was, you know, six hundred and ninety versus six forty-eight and then two point four million versus one point five on those bid alternatives. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, we are selecting one, the low bidder here and, and, you know, if, that's still your recommendation.
Sure, yeah, Dave Cronin, City Engineer, Public Works Department, those bid alternates from the original bid were for site grading work, which, which were not including any of that work in these change orders. In the original bid, we did not include any work for the extension of Nineteenth Street, or O'Connell Road up to Nineteenth Street, that was not included as a bid alternate. So what we've done is gone back and, in the last couple of months, since you've directed us to kind of look at what it would cost to extend the road, we've come up with a cost estimate on the quantity of work and then used the, the contract unit prices from the low bid amount of the base bid and we came up with the dollar amount of approximately one point two million dollars. And that would include the contractor providing us with a set of engineering documents at the end of the project, kind of like a traditional design build would work. And so they will, we will still work with them to ensure that they meet, you know, proper design guidelines with, with the construction of the work and will inspect it like, like the other work out on the project. And essentially, we're just extending O'Connell with the same type of street section north up to Nineteenth Street, including a water line. They'll do all the demolition and grading as part of the work and we've, we've estimated those costs all into the one point two million dollars. And, and just kind of the way the design build works, they're responsible for any additional work that would go over the one point two million dollars. So they, it's, it's an amount not to exceed that and that's what we think is an appropriate estimate for the work.
The, the one thing I want to, I think maybe getting to your question Vice Mayor is, is that none of the change orders that you've previously approved or that we're asking that you approve this evening relate to any of the add alternates that were in the original bid?
That's correct.
We're not, it's not like we, we know that some of the add alternates, other contractors had a, had a better price on some of them. We're not, the, particularly the haul dirt from, from A to B, that's essentially has occurred, but it, it was not the, one of those grading alternates that we had in the original bid about a year ago.
Okay, when we go to this project then, both of you chime in on this, the unit price of that contract, of today's contract is still consistent with what it was earlier when we accepted the contracts originally, right? All the unit prices of all this stuff, the concrete and all?
Yes.
Were you using unit prices that are about a year old?
Yes, when, and you're talking about the extension of O'Connell, correct?
Correct.
Yes, for our estimate to do that work, we used the unit prices from the 2013 bid with our estimated quantity of the work.
Okay, but my question is, are those unit prices today still good that we're using?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and you arrived at those because of the earlier contract or, or what the market out there is charging right now?
We, we arrived with the current contract.
Current contract?
Yeah.
With the, with the contract that was bid in March of last year, those, those contract unit amounts that RD Johnson bid last year are the same contract unit amounts that we're using for this change order. Is that, is that accurate?
Are they higher prices now or lower prices?
What's that?
What's the market doing right now?
Um, you know, I would, it's, I mean, the construction is increasing and I would anticipate them being higher. If we were to bid the project now, I would think they would be higher. Um, you know, we, we kind of, we anticipated the project to originally be complete in 2013 and they've even kind of been generous and do extend, they didn't do any of the concrete paving in 2013, but they guaranteed that price in 2014 even though they've, um, we've kind of gone back and forth, they've kind of mentioned that concrete prices have increased, you know, into 2014, but they're still holding that for the stuff that was in the original base bid even though the contract's going into fourteen. So I think it's, I, I think the costs are increasing for construction and, and that's, and that's kind of our basis for, for using when we came up with the, the amount.
This is similar to how we did Rock Chalk Park, right? We used unit pricing that had been bid at other locations and just used the same increments that were priced for what intersection was, it was different work that King had done, is that not correct?
Yeah, we, on, on that project, we compared the prices to the average for other projects.
That had been bid.
That had been bid, so...
So we're doing the same, similar thing here?
It's similar in a way.
The commodity, the commodity had been bid at one time to us. We're using the same pricing.
The distinction is, is that this is an existing project on a, on the, on the same side, very similar, I mean, it physically connects to the existing work that's, that's been done and it's, there's a, they're similar, yes Commissioner, but I guess I would point, this is, this is more traditional how we do change orders where we've, we've, we've known that we wanted to do this work and it's such a large project and we were fortunate enough in our original bids that we wanted to do some additional work. And I want to highlight a little bit why we want to do O'Connell Road Extension. It is adjacent to our largest tract out there, it is, it is adjacent to the tract that has received the most interest as we have been talking with potential tenants on that location. So we want to be able to get that infrastructure in particularly. I mean, it opens up more property for additional use out there and then also it helps us eventually with the Nineteenth Street Extension. In your 2016 capital improvement debt budget, we have an improvement of Nineteenth Street between Harper and Venture Park. Nineteenth Street there is in very poor condition, doesn't have sidewalks on both sides, needs a new water line, doesn't have appropriate drainage, it's an old county section line road, needs to be rebuilt anyway. But significantly, we think it's going to provide additional access into Venture Park for employees that live adjacent to the park that want to be able to, to access it. The extension of O'Connell Road at this time helps us with the improvement on Nineteenth Street because when we improve Nineteenth Street, we're going to have a major challenge with the detour. There's not a real good place to go off of that street. So we'll probably be having traffic detour down New O'Connell Road as we rebuild Nineteenth Street because it's a, it's a gut and go, I mean, it's a complete tear out of that street and, and rebuild. So we, we see value also in, in having this in place so that when we get to 2016, we'll have a, a good detour route as well.
David, I appreciate all that and Dave Cronin also, you know, my only reason to bring it up is I wanted to make sure that I understood on the, on the bid alternatives and whether or not those are the low bid prices. I also wanted to make sure that the unit prices that we were using on a, on a project today that was nearly priced out a year ago was still, you know, good based on what the market has out there right now. And you're telling me that?
Yeah.
We negotiated that and we believe that the prices are up and since it's, you know, this is probably one of the bigger change orders you would vote on as a Commissioner, but it makes sense to do it because you have the contract up there and we have the ability to do it right now.
Yeah, correct, and, you know, we haven't bid a project yet this year, 2014, but, you know, I anticipate them, their, their prices won't be any less than they were last year. That's my, that's my, my thought, so.
I might also say that the contract, since the contractor's there, we are going to save on mobilization, which typically on these projects is substantial, this could be a couple hundred thousand dollars just for this change order. And we're also saving on engineering design, the contractor, city staff and the contractor within this number is hiring some additional engineering design work too, so that could be about a hundred thousand dollars as well. So there's some additional savings just because the contractor's physically there.
Thank you all, Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, David. So is there any discussion or public comment on this?
Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve item number four A with the change orders.
Second, motion to approve item four A by Vice Mayor Amick, second by Commissioner Riordan, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes five zero. City Manager's report.
David, Mayor, just a little bit of information in regards to another construction project, this is the plan of La Carreza reconstruction and you see the project schedule there, there have been a number of questions in regards to how that project is going to proceed as far as the timeframe, you see that laid out. We do have a public open house scheduled, a quail run on February fifth. February twenty-seventh, open house is to talk about all of our city construction projects will be in this room of Mark Teal, which may really help us try and get the word out to the community. The February fifteenth is going to be solely on the La Carreza drive improvements, including the grant document which will be authorized at that communication facility. We want you to see that, that outline. Continue to process glass through the partnership that we have with Brickwell Glass. You will recall that the crew site recycling program that the Commission has authorized to start this October includes a city pickup of glass at the crew site. But we're continuing with this relationship with Brickwell Glass at this point, just as an aside, we have been spending some time, the staff, talking about that rollout, obviously a lot of work to do, not only just from an education standpoint, but just from a management standpoint, we've also talked about some of the public area recycling that we're going to be presenting to you with some options here later in the year. I think that that would be an enhancement to, to, I think, public area, probably downtown, some of our production operation facilities as well. So a lot of interesting things happening in the recycling area this year. Eagle Bend made an improvement to where the holes out there, you can see some photos. And then finally, we put together a status of the enlarged project there on Thirty-First Street. You see a report that Sandy and Scott put together in regards to that project and some of the initial evaluations we had, you see, I know there were some questions about how that project is proceeding in person, we'd like to be able to have that, we'd be happy to respond to the questions that you have now.
Any questions for Dave?
Still can't hit the green on seventeen.
Not a chance.
It's not too late, we can make some changes here.
Just move the hole about a hundred and thirty yards closer.
Go, go to slope, right?
It's like a mini golf, go away. Alright, any questions for Dave? Alright, the next item on the agenda is, rather agenda item one, which is to consider items related to the Vermont Street Parking Garage and the New Hampshire Parking Street Garage.
Mark Teal and I and others have been working on this item for your consideration. We've had the Vermont Street Parking Garage open since roughly September, there's still been some work being done, there's still a little bit more work to do immediately adjacent to the garage, also the landscaping is not yet installed, there's some sidewalk work that needs to occur, obviously along the line in Kentucky. One of the things that we need to do is work on a great plan for that, that structure. We looked at a number of different plans, we talked last year about some type of mechanized entry gate, that didn't, didn't proceed. What we are recommending tonight is a system that would provide for two-hour free parking on lower levels of that parking garage, ten-hour parking through the upper levels of the garage and that we would then designate the very top level, at least temporarily, as, as free parking. We'll talk just a little bit about that. Been in discussions with Parks and Rec and with the library director in regards to what we think will be beneficial for those uses, obviously there's other users of that parking garage as well because we see it being used now and neither the pool nor the library are open, so there's been some, some utilization so far. The, if you will recall, the roughly one hundred and twenty-five spaces, surface lot that we had there was all metered, but it was a mixture of short-term and long-term meters. So what we're trying to do is mimic that, that usage there with short-term and, and long-term usage. Short-term we think will help with a number of library patrons that are moving in and out, it'd be primarily that more accessible area and then ten-hour parking for those that are going to spend more time in the downtown area, employees, maybe long-term library users or employees. And then the, the top floor, we're recommending be, be free. I think that's been a successful incentive at the New Hampshire Parking Garage for some employees that don't mind walking maybe a little bit, to have that as a, as, as an option. The, the change order you have this evening is through the, the vendor that was in the, the bid package when we bid the, the parking garage originally and we've talked with that, that vendor, we think that the dollar amount is, is appropriate. We would have security cameras in the garage, which we think are an important part of that facility, and then we'd have two pay-on foot stations for the, the ten-hour spaces where if you don't have the, the ten-hour hang tag, you can go and pay to park. The rate that we have now and we're recommending is one dollar to park. If you leave that space for a while and then come back, you'll pay another dollar. So that's, that's the, the recommendation there, the, the lower, kind of the lower level that's a little bit subterranean, not quite off of Kentucky, we'd recommend the ten-hour parking, the parking garage is going to be used by employees, but then we'd go through and have the rest of the garages I outlined. We also have, and Mark put together a video where we drive through the garage if you're interested in that, it's also further outlined in, in the memo. The, the other recommendation that we have this evening is not directly related to Vermont Street, but it is something that I've hinted at and I think that it's appropriate at this time for you all to consider as well, which is to remove the free parking designation on the top level of the New Hampshire Street Parking Garage. We did that probably, I want to say six, eight years ago, I'm not sure exactly when we did it. And that was before the, the substantial redevelopment that you see there now, before the nine oh one building, obviously before the hotel was approved and maybe some of the other things up and down New Hampshire as well. That parking garage at that time was underutilized in my opinion, I think in other opinions, there wasn't a lot of people parking there and it made sense to do that. Since then, we've obviously seen a lot more development. We know about the, the hotel, as, as you all have talked about, obviously nine oh one is, is built and, and operating. And then Diane's been working with the, the development team and here in the coming weeks, she'll be approving a number of, or considering to approve a number of matters related to the apartments at the northeast corner of Ninth and New Hampshire. So that project is getting ready to proceed as well. So we think that it's appropriate that we resume paying for the, the parking garage at that location because it's busier, it's, it's, that incentive has worked and that there's, there's good usage of that. Had, you know, I think we've had a little bit of correspondence with a couple of citizens that have pointed out how much they've liked that and I very much appreciate that and we all do as well, but there's no real, there's not really anything such as free parking. Somebody's paying for the maintenance, the electricity, the cleaning, the monitoring and it's the rest of the, the parking fund that's doing that. It's also been city taxpayers that have paid for the rehabilitation of parking garages. We spent about four hundred thousand dollars for the New Hampshire Parking Garage and the Riverfront Parking Garage as far as just some general maintenance work that has occurred and that will need to continue to occur as well. So we still need revenue for our, our parking system. That's not the main reason we have our parking system. The main reason we have our parking system and our structure is to enhance the vibrant downtown that we have and get people here to patronize businesses, get places for employees and such. We don't, we write this letter about every other month in our, in our office, we don't balance our city budget on three-dollar parking tickets. We try and move parkers to the best locations for them, have a little bit of turnover and have some revenue to monitor and maintain our system. So that's, that's our recommendations. Mark is here to talk about the actual system that we are recommending. In place of had, I think, some discussion with Commissioners about, are there some ways that maybe we can improve some of the long-term passes and we can certainly talk about that this evening as well. We do think it's appropriate to go ahead and move forward on the, the equipment that we're, we're recommending, it's going to take a few months to buy that, get it installed. We'd like to have that system in place for this summer. We know that the pool will open Memorial Day and we're hopeful that the library will open in early summer as well, so we want to get that system in place at about that time. I'd be happy to respond to the questions.
Any questions?
Dave, the only question that I would have would be about the top floor of the New Hampshire Street Garage. You know, we've taken, you know, right now we have a lot of parking that's just shut down because of all the construction that's going on in the area. We're going to have New Hampshire Street closed down till what, March thirty-first?
That's my understanding.
And that parking will open back up below then, right?
The, there'll be some parking available along New Hampshire, definitely, hopefully on the west side, some of the parking on the east side probably won't be available until the, the hotel's getting close to being open as far as the ability for them to continue to do construction. Immediately along those angled, those angled spaces that were there along the east side of New Hampshire.
Well, I guess one of, one of the things that I was thinking, I, I know that a lot of the, the parking has been, you know, shut down temporarily and I know that there's probably some parking need from the people along Rhode Island Street there, you know, I don't know if anybody's utilizing that space up there right now, but I know a lot of people are using, you know, and it probably makes sense, you know, over the next couple of months to go ahead and take the free designation of. But, you know, while we're missing so much parking right now down on the street, a lower level, would it be appropriate to leave it on for a couple more months?
I think that's fine. I don't necessarily think that, I mean, we're, we're obviously missing out on revenue every day that this occurs, but I think that's fine to try and maybe do it all at once. We certainly want to broadcast it for at least thirty, maybe longer days in order to tell people in regards to that. We've obviously got to change some signs and things like that. So if you, if you said wait until New Hampshire is open and at least there's some additional parking in regards to that, that's certainly, I, I would think that would be appropriate. You all, the one thing that I didn't mention at the beginning is, is there's a lot of things that you all have to follow in regards to procedures and rules as far as that. You've got complete control over your parking system. You set the rates, you set the hours, you can do a, a lot of different things here. So the one thing that I'd like for you to do is at least listen to our recommendations about how to continue to operate the, the parking funds, about a million dollar a year fund and tries to accomplish a lot of different goals.
I agree with Mike, I think we should hold off on changing the designation until Rhode Island Street's cleaned up a little bit, we get a better flow of traffic and give back a few of the parking spaces. It might be nice to wait until the hotel opens, but I don't know.
Well, that's fine, I, I just think that there's been a lot of parking taken away right now because, you know, we're trying to help, you know, with, you know, the construction and the crane and everything that goes on there and I, I think where these cars, you know, maybe some people can't afford, you know, to be able to park there, because I know we received letters this weekend or a couple emails this weekend from people that work downtown, you know, who get paid a whole lot, so.
One of the thoughts I have, this takes a situation right now, if you go out and buy a, a hangar, I guess is what you call it?
Hangar.
Hangar sold on an annualized basis and it's a hundred and...
One hundred and ninety-two dollars.
One hundred and ninety-two dollars. If you do the math, you do get one free day right now, you get Sunday. And if you do the math and you park every day of the year, it costs you a little over sixty-one cents a day. And so people could buy that if they wanted to, it's prorated, so if you come in on February one, you pay eleven-twelfths of that as opposed to the whole year. There's two things that I was asking City Manager Corliss about was, first of all, if we could prorate it on the back end, let's say I'm a senior and I'm going to graduate in May and I'd like to go ahead and buy that, but I don't want to lose June, July, August and all the way through next year, then that's a, I'm disinterested from doing that. And secondly, sixty-one cents a day is a small amount, but when you have to fork up a hundred and ninety-two bucks at one time, it gets to be a large number. So if we could look at selling those either by the quarter or by the month, and then also if there's a way we could make them more accessible, right now you have to go to the municipal court, you have to go to the city clerk's office. So those two things are kind of a disincentive as well. So, you know, that might be something we want to look at is to try and refine that a little bit more, sell it a shorter period of time so it's more affordable in terms of what the population has to expend at any one time and see if that doesn't help the situation as well. The other thing to keep in mind here on this parking garage is that there, there's still going to be some free parking, they might have to walk two blocks, but free is, comes at a cost sometimes. Nothing's free as Dave said, so you might have to expend a little energy to continue the free parking by walking a couple blocks and parking a little bit further away. So there is still the opportunity to park free with a little energy used.
How come you keep looking at me?
It's the inalienable right to park free. It's the inalienable right to park free. It's been a common theme down here for years.
Dave, how do we, I was around horns when all the perception and self-evaluations were happening about how much the New Hampshire Street Garage was not used. To me, it seems largely based upon people driving by there at perhaps what would be either busy times or non-busy times. Is there a way that we're going to be able to figure out how many people are parking there at any given time? Or is it just going to kind of be a wild guess?
Terry Pierce, our Parking Control and Animal Control Manager in the Police Department, I don't know if you know Terry, has her staff, and she largely does it as well, do occasional utilization studies where they walk around and they count cars. And we get a pretty good idea about utilization in regards to that. I don't have the 2013 report yet, but we look at it and try and analyze those numbers. So we do look at the utilization of that garage and other places. And we try and draw some conclusions in regards to that.
I've been downtown several evenings where the parking garage is not full and have even heard some people remark, in my opinion, perhaps prematurely and somewhat ignorantly, oh, this is another parking garage we didn't need. And so I think it'd just be good when those kind of things come up to be able to say, actually, we have information how it's being utilized. In its first year, it was utilized X percent more than, you know, the New Hampshire system. Just to curb some of those fears with folks that perhaps think that this was an unnecessary thing for downtown.
No, we'll be able to point to that. Because right now, you can see the video, and we've got uses on four or five different levels of parking garage right now, which I think is pretty good considering the fact that the library is completely shut down. Obviously, the pool's not there, and we don't really have very good pedestrian way along Vermont to use it as well. So I think that over time, we're going to see more utilization. We build these structures not necessarily for the year that they open, but for the decades afterwards that they'll be used and hopefully support downtown.
It'd just be good to have some data since we're not going to have, you know, the things coming in and out of how these are being utilized.
Well, I'll see where those reports are, and I'll show you some of the earlier reports as well. Because we, I know that when we looked at, when the 901 New Hampshire group asked for some parking concessions, which we did not give at the New Hampshire Garage, we looked at the utilization study and the utilization of that parking garage was continuing to grow and to be used.
Can you tell me what kind of pay-on-foot system we're going to have? Is it automated? Is it, do they print out a ticket? Does it slide your money into a slot like some of the ones we have? What are we buying?
Good evening, Mayor Chris Terrence, Public Works. When we came to the system, what was originally bid was a Luke system. It's pretty common. It's what's in the KU Med Center parking garage. It will merge with the current pay-on-foot station similar type of system that's in the New Hampshire Garage, although that system needs to be modernized. The system is completely expandable to whatever technology the parking system evolves into in the future. It can be done in a number of ways. The interface with the pay-on-foot station can either be through, you walk up and you simply enter the number of the space that you're in, and you tell it how long you want to park, and you pay your money and you leave. That's how it's going to be set up, starting in the new garage. It can also utilize license plate numbers. The interface can be the user types in their license plate number, and then they don't have to worry about what space they're in. So that's how this will initially be set up. It has the capability of accepting credit cards, cash, or coins. Whether or not that is how the system will be utilized to begin with or not needs to be determined by policy and whether it's feasible to accept those types of things.
What brand is it?
It's called Luke Two System. It will interface with one of the systems that we were looking at for license plate recognition, meaning either with handheld units or with camera mounts on vehicles. Parking enforcement can drive around, and the system, the pay-on-foot stations will talk to those enforcement officers and their equipment and tell them, based on license plate numbers, whether or not they're paid or if they're in the right spot and those types of things. The system is also capable of being expanded to doing permits like in neighborhoods. So like in the Oriya neighborhood, for example, if we were to have a permit parking system in that neighborhood, the resident would register with their license plate number or license plate numbers for multiple vehicles. And as they drive through the neighborhood, the system would recognize that they are indeed supposed to be there and they're authorized to park there. So there's, we're starting out with the basics of it, which is the interface with the user, the pay-on-foot station. The technology is 2014, but the process is what users are used to currently in the New Hampshire Garage.
Could it print a pass like Bob was describing?
It does have, if we choose by policy to do that, it would have the ability to accept vouchers or to accept validations if, you know, if the library or other...
What I mean is, Bob was talking about selling a permit, like a monthly pass. Could it sell a month of parking for a license plate, for example?
It could. We are not proposing at this time to purchase any software packages that would make that usable. Basically, the pay-on-foot station that's going in is the hardware of it. The software package would have to be purchased as well to make those things usable. These pay-on-foot stations would interface with the appropriate software package on a smart device or from your home computer to where you could, like you were talking about earlier, Commissioner Shum, other locations to buy those ten-hour passes or the two-hour passes or the special-use passes. Those could all be done from a smartphone. The new technology that the parking industry is going to is more of the interface with the smart devices. So, you know, in theory, well, not in theory, I mean, if you had the right tools and software in place, a user could park in a meter, pay for their parking, and then ask it to remind them when they're about expired. And from the restaurant, they could hit the button and extend their parking, those types of things. It would be able to tell them, you know, I'm coming across the bridge into downtown Lawrence. Where's the best place to park? Where are there spaces available and those types of things? We are not, this system as we are recommending is not going to do any of that. It is capable of being expanded to do that, though.
So software?
Yes.
Is it expensive, the software? Are the upgrades expensive?
I, it's, yes, it is. It is a few, and that's one of the reasons we didn't, we're not recommending doing it just for the new garage. It needs to be more of a global concept. We need to incorporate the other parking garages, the surface lots, and some of the other things to make the scale of the cost accommodating, you know, in terms of, I don't know, if you want to quantify it by a per-space cost or whatever. But we didn't think that at this time it made, would be a good recommendation just for, to have a separate way to enforce just in that garage and then have to enforce the other garages in a different way. I think our, I'm going off of memory here, which isn't always the best, but I think the software package cost was just over $200,000. So it's fairly expensive.
So we're just buying the...
And you have recurring costs.
Hardware right now is for the sixty-some thousand dollars.
We're just buying the interface with the user to allow them to do that. The other hardware, there's other hardwares that would need to be purchased with that. It's the vehicles and the handheld units and the cameras and all that, but...
So will this allow to do pay and display off the shelf?
I'm sorry.
The pay and display concept, the ticket you print and you put in your dashboard? Or is it just pay by space or number or license plate? Do you know?
I'm not sure if that could do it.
We're fine with allowing at this point.
Yes, I'm not, I'd have to, we'd have to research to see if... It's a reverse type of a parking system. Instead of paying and going up and putting your money, and you go up, and I've seen, you know, and you say, and it prints you a ticket, you go back and you put it in your vehicle.
Exactly, which is what KU Parking used to do, which you had to...
I'm not...
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't imagine that the system can't do that, but I'm not, I can't tell you tonight that it can.
Okay.
What this system will do will allow for someone to go and park in the ten-hour spaces, the Riverfront spaces. And we will, our current plan is to, we're looking at numbering those spaces. We're also looking at how much it would cost for them just to enter their license plate number. We've got to have signs to tell people to remember their license plate number. So remember our license plate number anymore, because you pay gas for it. So we're looking at that. But what we're probably going to do is start off with the system where they just leave the parking space number assigned to people, just like what we do in New Hampshire. They're not paying for a certain number of hours, they're paying a dollar to park. That lets them stay there for ten hours. But what Mark has talked about and elaborated on for a lot of potential uses is we're buying the right platform that will allow us to do, we think, a number of different other things as we continue to look at those options. But we're revenue constrained in our ability to make big technological jumps. I think I relayed to some of you when I was at National League of Cities, went around, talked to the different vendor exhibit booths, and one of them, there were three or four of them that had, you know, parking systems and things like that. I talked to one of those vendors, chatted it up for a while, and said, well, how much do you charge to park? And I told him how much we did, and he started a gut laugh, saying, you probably win the prize in the exhibition hall as far as the cheapest parking. We have relatively inexpensive parking. That's good. I said, helps get people downtown. It's a challenge in the sense that we don't have a lot of revenue coming in or a lot of expenditure ability to maybe do some of these big technological jumps that we eventually want to be able to get to. So we think we're starting correctly by getting a good platform. We'll probably be then looking, if this system works as well as we think it will, we'll probably go and make a recommendation and we adopt the same system in New Hampshire parking garage. Because it's fifteen years old, however old it is.
It's original.
It's original with the facility, so I guess it's not that old, 2002, I think when we opened up back, so it's twelve years old. We need to replace that system as well. And then we're looking at license plate reader systems. But we think that its application is perhaps maybe downtown system-wide as opposed to having parking control officers chalk vehicles in two-hour spaces. Maybe they would read license plates at a certain time and come back at two hours and one minute, scan the whole parking lot again and find out who's been there longer than two hours. But there's a number of different issues in regards to that, and they're not inexpensive systems. But we're at least developing what we think is the right platform to be able to do for.
Okay.
What I'd be interested in is, I mean, I'd agree that we have very inexpensive parking. But, you know, you go to cities that are acting grown-up in relationship to something that's a very tenuous issue. And parking seems to be something that in this community is a problem all the time. And I'm not sure, perhaps it is because it's a problem, but it might also be because it's just perceived as one. I think it would be good for us to maybe have staff look at the feasibility of a different kind of system. And we probably have to start it out small because it is not going to be revenue-neutral. But I think we're missing a real opportunity to perhaps curb a lot of the issues that we see in relationship to our parking by virtue of staying old-fashioned with the way that we do things. And so the smart meter concept in larger cities, I know, would cost us more and we would have to look at, you know, raising parking fees. And I don't know how any of you guys feel about that, but I just think that, you know, for somebody to be able to come into town and not have to drive around for fifteen minutes looking for a parking place, they could pull up their smartphone and do the technology you just said. I'm almost wondering if that would not be an investment that would serve our community well in the long run and the business community downtown well in the long run to be progressive and futuristic in relationship to how we do those things. We're not going to revert back as far as technology is concerned. It's only going to get more sophisticated, it's only going to get better. I would be interested in seeing something like that for, I don't know how we would do it if a certain set number of spaces. You know, I remember being in Seattle when they have the spaces right alongside of the road. You can just swipe your card, and it's so easy. You can do it from your smartphone, they have apps that you can download. Maybe it's just because I'm the youngest one up here that that sounds like a really good idea to me. But to be sitting in the middle of a restaurant and to be able to have your phone remind you, you know, I just think those would be something, those would be things that would get people talking about us, about how progressive our community is in relationship to something that's been a rather difficult, stressful, and frustrating issue for everybody. Business owners and out-of-town guests and, you know, if we want our downtown to be a grown-up downtown, I think it would be who of us to start looking and acting and thinking like a grown-up downtown.
Yeah, and I think upgrades in technology are going to require upgrades in price to offset the cost initially and then to operate them because all those conveniences come with a price. And I totally agree, those are the way we, that would solve a lot of the problems. And there's a lot of uptowners that are going to continue to come here, and they will think it's cheap, but they think that tickets are cheap too, because it's a dollar to park and, it's three dollars now for a parking ticket, so...
Three dollars for an overtime.
Yeah, so if you look at it, those are great steps to take. We just need to talk about then, are we willing to up the fees to help pay for this? Because I think that's really what's...
And I guess I'd be interested in just seeing, you know, maybe seeing you guys work on different options for ways that we might be able to get there. Because we could try to do math up here, but, you know, we don't know the revenues that are generated from what comes in. And I don't know if somebody just throws all the orders into a machine and it spits out, you know, what each one has. But, you know, I think that those would be good things for us to look at.
Yes, please.
Jeremy, as one of the older guys now, I got to tell you, one of the things that we need to be really careful of is as somebody who owns a small business in downtown, got to make sure as these fees go up, every time that we have a change in the parking rate, you know, the tickets that we raise from time to time, maybe once every twenty years or something like that. There is an effect on that from the shopper that comes into downtown. So we got to make sure that, you know, we do have a problem. We have one of the greatest problems around, we have people that have to hunt for parking places. But, you know, some of the ideas, you know, that you have are good, you know, I respect that and things that we ought to look into. But we need to be very careful about making sure that we don't, you know, price ourselves out of the business when it comes to parking, depending on what those rates, you know, equate to as far as fees go through the meters and through ticketing. That's the old guy.
There is a careful balance between the availability and the different options that Jeremy talks about. I remember a consultant, I went to a League of Cities consultation table forum, and the consultant there had a great expression. He said, you know, if you can park where you want to, you don't want to. So if you think about that, it's pretty much indicative of the place you're trying to get into. If everyone wants to be there, then it's got something good going on. So just food for thought, old sage.
Yes, wisdom.
Good advice.
And it also sounds like the system can accommodate that, so.
Yeah, that sounds good.
If we have the desire and we have the money, we can do that. We have to be careful.
Yeah, and I was just kind of geared towards Bob's idea of less burdensome, smaller purchases. And it sounds like we could probably get this to do that kind of thing without adding labor and staff and, you know, making it more accessible for people.
I got the idea, the thought was that, my daughter lives in New York City, and once a month she buys her pass on the...
The street party.
No, on the, uh...
Oh, subway?
Subway. And, you know, it's twenty-five bucks or something like that, or thirty bucks. It's, it's an affordable amount that she can go wherever she wants to for, for the month and they buy it once a month. You know, it's something that's, that's affordable. If she had to come up with three hundred and fifty dollars, I think she'd be walking a lot. So the once a month cycle might be helpful to, to sell passes. What I'm hearing from the commission is among the, the gin items here, but also a review to see if we can move the monthly or quarterly pass system, particularly not only that, but maybe better availability for the, for the sales and transactions for that. And then Commissioner Farmer's request is to take a little bit of a larger look on some of the technological improvement opportunities that we may have, and maybe a little bit more of a, of a guide and a suggestion of where we want to go. I definitely want to move that, that direction, and that's where some of our indications have been is that we, from just a management of the parking fund status, we've got to find ways to be more innovative with, with that and be in tune with our ability to perhaps lower some of our labor costs. We have technology, we are friendly. We also want opportunities to help pay and look for spaces as well. So I think there's a lot of things. I do think we have a pretty good parking system in the sense that probably one of the best measures of our parking system is the privacy of downtown. And I think it works fairly well. There are challenges to it, and we need to keep looking for ways to improve.
Indeed.
One of the things, as long as you're going to do a futuristic study, is that the, because I've been down here a long time like Mike, but the, one of the problems is the quarter, put, having a quarter on your person to put in the meter. If you don't have, when you pull up there, if you don't have a quarter to put in the meter, you've got to go pop one up. So, you know, down, down the road somewhere, obviously we've got to be able to have the flexibility using credit cards. It's, that's what everyone carries now anyway, and, and be able to, like Jeremy said, I guess, in Seattle where you can just whisk it somewhere and you get your ticket and you're, you're okay, so. Realistically, there's problems with that because we don't charge very much, so.
But we can, we can look at that, see, see what there's some opportunities to, to get at that.
Well, and, and my whole thing is, and I hope when I suggest that, I hope you don't misunderstand my intentions. I think if you aim at nothing, you'll get it every time, and we can have, we can say we want to do better in relationship to that. And I know what Dave's answer is going to be, and that is, we lose money, you know, we can't, we've got to have it be revenue neutral, so if we want to do something, we can't just, you know, pull money off a tree and make it happen. So, so I think we need to have a specific direction for where we're going and what we're shooting at so that maybe over the next five or ten or fifteen or twenty years, we can slowly begin to, you know, progress out for, for that. Because Bob, it is annoying going downtown and having to, you know, dig change out and, and for everybody, not just us. Especially when you have folks from out of town come in that don't know that you need quarters down there. So it'd just be good to have a, to have a plan and maybe roll that into a capital improvement. You know, at some point that we could see that we can know that like down the road, that's something that we want to get at.
Well, one of the, one of the things that is evident to me is that the price of parking on Massachusetts Street is too cheap because it's always locked up. And I read a consultant report that said you ought to have a one in three chance of getting a parking space on, on Massachusetts Street. You, you don't, you probably have a one in ten or one in twenty, depending on the part of the day. So that's a disincentive to people to come here if they're trying to get in to do something right away and you can't find those prime spaces. So the idea would be to move people who are going to be longer term parkers off the prime corridor and into longer term spots. But you, you have to accomplish that with pricing, so.
Or technology.
Or like Jeremy said, being able to find out where it's at.
Yeah, yeah. We do, we have been using technology for our bus, you know, you can type in where's the bus and it'll tell you when it's, when it's coming. So we're definitely targeting it.
These pay on foot stations take the pay on, the current pay on foot station technology, one hundred and eighty degrees because currently Terry's staff has to go to the pay on foot station in New Hampshire and print out paper and then walk through the garage and compare that to the spaces. This, the new pay on foot stations will, as they go through the garage, they'll, they'll have that information in real time as they're walking through, so they don't have, they won't have to make those extra trips, so.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Nothing quite like words.
Tightens everybody.
Right. Thank you. Public comment?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, my name's Katie Walsh. I was really glad that Commissioner Farmer, you talked about using some of the more modern ways to handle our parking situation. I know in San Francisco and a couple other cities right now in their most densely visited parts of the city, they are using a phone app that tells you where there's empty parking spaces. And I think we may just leap over the credit card thing and go to smartphone pay, which is also happening in other cities. So you would, it would cut down on all the circling, circling. And yes, you could have more expensive meters at the heart of the, of downtown and they'd get cheaper as you fan out. But I, I think it might lead to more revenue because you're filling all those empty parking spots because people can look at their phone and see where the closest one to where they're going is. So Citibank is working with San Francisco, you could start there on your computer. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Commissioners' comments or a motion?
Dave, I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate all the work that you and Mark and staff has done on making the parking rates consistent between both garages. I still think that's a very positive move.
Mayor, I'm happy to move approval of the items listed, but when we get to item number C, you know, I can either look at it, you know, like June first or even at the time as you suggested, during the time that, when the, or the hotel finished.
Yeah, June, June first seems reasonable in that there's maybe less demand from students in town. But what's the completion date for the hotel supposed to be on the southeast corner?
I don't think it's going to be completed until the end of this year.
Okay.
I don't really recall. Just, just my, my eyeball, and everyone else's eyeball, but I think it's...
So, we're going to, we have the parking that's missing now in the nine hundred block of New Hampshire. We're getting ready to start the other building and we're going to lose probably parking along in there, I would imagine.
I, I would imagine, I mean, one of the things the, we've talked about is that as that would, would come before you all, that they need to start talking about their traffic control plans for construction as well because that is going to impact Ninth Street, that portion of New Hampshire, and then our surface parking lot there on, the old Anderson lot there on the east side of, of New Hampshire as well. And I don't, I don't know exactly what that impact would be, but I feel certain that a number of those spaces will be temporarily inconvenienced as well.
Well, let's, let's just do this then. Uh, Mayor, I'd make a motion that...
Can I ask a question first, please?
I'm sorry.
Do we know what, do you have any numbers on the utilization rate of that building at this time?
Of the, of the parking garage?
Yes. I mean, how, how full is it, I guess is the question.
Well, it's, it's, it's increasingly very full.
Yeah.
With the, the nine oh one building and the office, there's some, you know, construction traffic there as well. And there has been some displaced parking. The, the one consideration I would ask you to, to weigh is, is that keep in mind that while, while free is convenient and costly for those that find the space, if you've got a, a pay requirement for that top level, I'll make sure that those that want, that want to pay or have the ability to pay with a hang tag would be more likely to get that space. So I guess my point is, is that while we're inconveniencing that, that intersection in that area here as the, that those redevelopment projects proceed, having, having pay on, on the top floor will maybe make some of those spaces more available for some...
Push it, as you said, push it to the garage over by...
Of course, yeah.
So June first then, is that, is that...
That's fine.
Okay.
My second motion.
All right, motion by Vice Mayor Amick, seconded by Commissioner Shum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is consider authorizing the Merit Sign Agreement twenty-five, or two five one dash thirteen, which is a state route transfer turnback agreement of U S forty between the city of Lawrence and K dot, K ten, I guess.
Commissioners, you've conceptually approved what you're going to see here this evening. We've been working with, uh, K dot, I should say Chuck has been working with them, or Chuck has been calling them on a weekly basis to get this agreement from them, and we got it this last week. It follows through on some of your earlier directions, a number of these projects we've already proceeded with. The one thing that I would emphasize is, is that as K dot has talked to us over the years about the highway improvements in this county and in this region, they've always forecasted that as they add the new state highway with K ten, and now K ten under construction is the South Lawrence Traffic Way, they, they plan on turning back some of these state highways because essentially as they look at the map, they've got too many state highway designations in this area. They're obviously going to be maintaining K ten. I think we're fortunate enough that we're getting something for this turnback agreement, and that's what Chuck's going to talk about.
Yeah, as City Manager has mentioned, during our development of the two thousand and fourteen budget, we brought this up with review of all the community's needs and our C I P. We presented the idea and K dot's desire to complete several important state transportation links, including the South Lawrence Traffic Way here in Lawrence and the interchange at Bob Billings Parkway and K ten. The proposed turnback agreement is essentially the four mile stretch of road between, of Highway forty between K ten and Iowa Street. Essentially, we have been working over the last several years to get that section of West Sixth Street, as, as is known locally, up to a good standard. It's maintained very well. We've replaced curbs, we've done a lot of inlets, we've done building overlays, we've done a lot of work. We've installed a lot of turning lanes, we've installed a lot of intersections. A lot of that was with K dot's participation as well, a lot of those geometric improvements at Sixth and Michigan. We've just been a lot of improvements. We did Castle, we did the intersection at Wacca Rusa. And then when I first got here, the whole stretch from Wacca Rusa all the way out to K ten was just rebuilt to the four lane section. So it's in really good shape. So we think that now's a good time to, I guess, negotiate with K dot to just turn back since that's the desire. So, and it does free up a lot of additional funds for a lot of other projects. Essentially, the agreement, just going over, provides the city with about three and a half million dollars in projects funding. We are looking at getting reimbursed for our Sixth and Iowa project, one and a half million dollars. K dot put in additional one million fifty thousand dollars into our Twenty Third and Iowa project. They had previously approved a highway safety funding for that in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. So we've got one point seven five million dollars for that project coming from the state. They've also agreed to lower our participation in the K ten and Bob Billings Interchange. Initially, they came to us with the proposal that the city and the county had to pony up about two million dollars. That has gone down to one million for the city. The county's only putting in five hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And then K dot is going to reimburse us once we get the signalization done at Sixth and George Williams Way and Sixth and Champion. Sixth and George Williams Way is already complete. So additionally, well, it's even more. Additionally, they've approved our clean funding, which will microsurface West Sixth Street from Wacca Rusa to K ten, just putting the surface course back on there and restriping. And they've also gone ahead and they've installed the signals at the intersection of Sixth and K ten. So that's what we're getting. What we are giving back to them or, or what we are losing is about forty-nine thousand dollars in highway maintenance funding. We get about three thousand dollars a lane mile. There's about four lanes, well, there is four lanes that they count. They never count the center lane, the turn lane. But there's four lanes and then it's four miles, so about sixteen miles, three thousand dollars, about forty-nine thousand dollars a year. What we have been able to do with the freed up funds, because these projects were planned projects in our two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget, we've been able to fund the center failure rehabilitation, our match to that grant from K dot. We're getting a signalization at Bob Billings Parkway and G W W. When K ten and Bob Billings Parkway opens up, we have, we, we're going to need to get a signal at that intersection. We've got three hundred thousand dollars to bring up for that project. Our match, which is another K dot project, but the match to that project for fiber and then the installation of additional fiber on Sixth Street from Wacca Rusa to Iowa, four hundred thousand dollars. And then our police facility, and that comes to two and a half million dollars that we, in projects that we'll be able to continue with. And the reroute, the reroute looks a little awkward. The reroute will, on Highway forty, if you're coming from the west, will detour south on towards K ten and then back up. They can't detour up to the north to I seventy, which was their original thought, but because it's a, these roads have federal funds in them and the toll road, or the K T A is a toll road, they had to provide a free route. So they have to take them back south and then back up fifty-nine. K dot is going to maintain access, control for that first quarter mile west or east of the interchange there, and that's basically just their standards that they want to maintain access control so it doesn't interfere with the operation of their interchange from exiting, traffic coming on and off the K ten. And then this will happen sometime around the end of July. We've got to get obviously signs redone, we've got to take some signs down, we've got to put some signs up. And so we're looking at probably July is quarter meaning that. And I can answer other questions if you have them. Yes?
If I could just, just a little bit, one of the things that this does is that it then gives us back access control along the rest of Sixth Street, which is not insignificant as we try and work with property owners in regards to development. I had a suggestion from a local citizen about maybe opening up better access. Sixth Street there immediately west of Wacca Rusa by the McDonald's. That actually makes a lot of sense to help that retail development move in and around. That would be something that we could then work on with that property owner, so you all would, would make that decision. The other thing is Chuck, we might just want to make sure the commissioners are, are, we didn't mention K dot's long term plans for Sixth and K ten.
Oh, that, yes.
You, you see now the, what are temporary traffic signals? We think they withstood the wind Sunday night. Those will hopefully be operational here later this week.
Next Thursday is what we're...
Next Thursday, okay.
Yeah, they're having problems getting electricity to the site to get it powered up, so.
Hopefully they thought, that's been a K dot project that's been needed for, for some time. But Chuck, you might amplify just a little bit about what their long term plans are because they did this as temporary signals because they do have some long term thoughts about that incident.
Yeah, the, the interchange is going to change. Whereas the traffic continues to grow and develop and for efficiency sake and to get pedestrian access across the bridges and stuff. I think we've talked before about a diverging diamond, and they're looking at that probably. It's probably five years out, but as an interim project, they needed to signalize the exit ramps. They find that during the peak hours, the traffic is backing up almost to where it's backing up on the K ten because it's a stop condition. So those signals will be actuated, so it's not like, you know, it's just going to go on and off on a, automatically. It's, it's going to be actuated. Then probably in about three to five years, they've already started the design. It's a pretty significant project, so it'll probably take a while to do, but, and then they've got to find the funding to do that. But that's their long term plan.
Right. Any questions for Chuck? All right, thank you. Public comment? Nope, okay. Guess so. Commissioners? Any trepidation or concern about the turnback agreement? I think having access control is going to be great, especially as we grow further west.
It will, and I appreciate all the work that, you know, staff did on this. Makes a lot of sense, you know, wherever we get a big bang out of a lot of dollars to do, a lot of good projects here in town that have been needed for a long time. So I appreciate all the thought that went into this, coming up with a plan that was able to get these things done.
Yeah, for sure.
Except for the negotiated deal between the county and the city and KDOT, but yeah, it's a whole other deal.
Mayor, I approve of approval of authorizing you to sign Agreement 251-13, the turnback agreement between the city and KDOT.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Farmer, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Public comment of a general nature? Okay, future agenda items?
Commissioners, next week, we have the loan transportation enhancement grant application that we're going to want you to consider. It's the Hobbs Park to Constant Park Trail. Commissioner Shum has been involved in it quite a bit. Others I know have got a strong interest in it, so we want to have you consider that. We think maybe a loan application from the community may put us in better stead as opposed to some other projects, so we've got that. We also designate next week as time to talk about the rental registration ordinance. Not sure that we will have all of the documents in place for next week. Been in discussions with all of the commissioners. That with Scott and I met with Commissioner Farmer yesterday, and he has some suggestions that he would like us to further explore that weren't directed by you all, but I think that as I look at the votes and as I understand the the different commissioners' positions on this, I think I certainly think that we need to have that information before we proceed as opposed to Commissioner Farmer saying, well, I've asked staff for this and it indicated it's not ready, and it won't be here for maybe a couple of weeks. A lot of good questions about the operation of the existing program and then some suggestive modification from the different drafts that you all have seen that reflect Commissioner Farmer's views about what he thinks is the best ordinance to review. So my my request is that Commissioner Farmer can correct and articulate on this as well. My my suggestion is that we would indefinitely defer it with the hope that within the next month, we will have that. And Commissioner Farmer, you may want to talk about maybe your desire for a public meeting and some other things as well in regards to this.
Yeah, so, you know, we've heard all along that the single family program has been effective and good. And I think the overarching 30,000 foot outcome of the program being, has it made neighborhoods safer, I think a clear and resounding yes can be said as a result of that. To me, though, we need a lot more data in order to clearly define just how good it has been. We've just kind of blanket heard that and thrown that out. And and my observation has been there's a lot of things that we don't know. And and so, you know, Scott and Dave were terrific yesterday in being receptive to some of the things that I'm asking. And, you know, it's interesting, in the beginning, when we started talking about this in the beginning of November, the types of things that we were looking to measure were were things like how many administrative warrants were served and how many complaints did we get about the process from tenants and landlords. Now I think we need to start looking at other things for how we're going to measure the success of this program. Things like how how long did it take to remediate inspection violations that were found? You know, there's there is no secret that the current planning staff that's there now is is very overworked. And and so what I didn't want to do was take the numbers that I was seeing and and immediately translate that to a much larger program only on an assumption and a hope and perhaps a prayer that it was going to be effective. And so I've been working with neighborhood folks and landlords, and and I think I think the ordinance and the checklist that I've been working with has satisfied both of those groups and getting them around the not certainly not everybody from both groups, but it's the first time that I've ever heard both groups say this is something that we can live with. And as we all know, this has been a very tenuous issue and and one that I think we need to take time to get right. I want to clarify my position and say that we do need to do something. We do need a rental registration program. So I'm not in any sense withdrawing support from that. I do want to see some more numbers in relationship to how feasible it is at the scale and scope that we're wanting it to do from the perspective of being revenue neutral, but also from the perspective of can planning staff, code enforcement staff do 1,000 units per year and remediate better than 75% of them? If you looked at, and I'll just say this because it was on the agenda, this has been one of my beefs, and it was Scott reminded me a dozen times yesterday, it was a snapshot in time. But if you look at the December 17th agenda, and it was a few questions that I'd asked, we did 855 inspections in single family neighborhoods last year. Of those 855 inspections, 361 had violations. And as of December 17th of 2013, of those 361 units that had violations, 33% of them had been remediated. So we had 67% of the homes that were inspected did not did did not get reinspected or fixed. And I think it's a very bad, it would be a very bad decision on on for us as policymakers to look at that metric and then to say, well, the only thing that's going to make it better is to do it bigger. And so those are the kinds of questions that I'm asking. And working on the ordinance is, as as Dave said, I'm hopeful that you that you'll like it. I think it incorporates the elements of of things that we've talked about, but that's kind of where I'm at with it. So so I appreciate the work that Dave and Scott and everybody else in code enforcement's doing and Randy, you know, to 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 look at this and and hopefully get it right.
Okay. So to answer your question, I think it'd be wise to indefinitely or not set a date at this time. Maybe next week we'll have better information to set a date, and we'll talk about it.
And I want to add one more thing. One of the things from feedback that I heard was when we get all of this data, it's it's going to be so new and diff, I mean, we haven't had it. And and when we get it, it's going to be important for us to take it to the community. So I suggested yesterday having a a public meeting of sorts where we invite neighborhood folks and landlords, and we talk through the different versions of the ordinance and hear feedback and, you know, certainly, I'm not saying that this has to be my ordinance in order to support it. I mean, I'm not going that direction. I'm just trying to build consensus amongst different groups and and hopefully we've got something to work with there. But that's why I wanted to have a public meeting, not so much that we could give feedback to change it again, but so that we could just more explain what it is that that this is. And I'm going to, if it's not a meeting put on by the city, I'm going to have a public meeting with members of the community to explain where I'm at with it. And I'm sure you guys can read about it from Chad's articles in the paper, but that's kind of that's kind of where I'm at with it. And so I appreciate you getting all the work in the past.
Okay.
My only request, and I think it's good to make sure we get this right, is that we do this, you know, within the next month. I think that would be something reasonable. I wouldn't want to go beyond that time. I want to give it enough time, but I don't want to do it so long that we lose steam on this.
Fair enough. Yes?
Well, and if having another public meeting is fine, but I don't think it ought to be with just you. I think it ought to be the whole commission and
Sure.
and the stakeholders because, you know, it's the way we've been doing it all along.
Sure.
Okay. Are there any commission items? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn the meeting by Commissioner Shum, seconded by what?
No, I just got to make sure Chad knew that all the commissioners were going to the chamber dinner. It's not all our camera.
49. Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. Amick?
Whoever.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Good night.